This time I'm calling the organizational meeting for the year 2021 to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Chad, would you lead us this evening? To the flag of the United States of America.
The Republic for which it stands.
One nation, united. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Post?
Here.
White? Here. Underhill?
Here.
Michaelak?
Here.
Zambito?
Here.
This time I make the following appointments. Deputy Supervisor Dan Underhill. Secretary to the Supervisor Heidi Leibrock. And Town Historian Bernita Scoings. My committee appointments are as follows. Audit Committee is Deputy Supervisor Underhill, Councilwoman White, Councilwoman Michaelak, and Councilwoman Zambito. Highway Committee shall be Underhill, myself, and Tom Lichtenthal. Water Surgeon shall be Underhill, Steve Mountain, and myself. Buildings and Grounds is Councilwoman White, Tom Lichtenthal, myself, and Steve Mountain. Parks and Recreation. Chad, you and Patty and Steve Mountain and Tom Lichtenthal. Video is yours, Chad. Fire Committee is Dan Underhill and myself. Court is Dan Underhill and Chad Zambito. Housing Initiatives is Patty Michaelak. IT Records Management is myself, Dan Underhill, Teresa Marasco, and Steve Mountain. And Planning Board is Sharon White. Teresa?
I have the information for the Association of Towns. The 2021 Training School and Annual Meeting. It's going to be virtually held this year, February 14th through the 17th. Training is for town officials. And the informational hearing will be Sunday, February 14th. The general opening session will be February 15th. Then there are going to be various group sessions for town board members, highway, town clerk, tax collection, fiscal officers, planning board. And then the annual business session will be Friday, or excuse me, Wednesday, February 17th. There's also, if the town wants to delegate someone to do the voting and participate in that, they can still choose to do that.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll move to resolutions. Sharon, Resolution Number One of 2021.
I think she got logged off. She's just coming back in.
Okay. Aaron?
Yes.
Resolution Number One, you're up, first one of the year.
What happened? Everybody just went away.
We were wondering the same thing.
Was it just me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Resolution Number One. General Organizational Resolution. Resolve that the following appointments be and are hereby made for the one-year term beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021. Landfill Coordinator Thomas Lichtenthal. Registrar of Vital Statistics Teresa M. Marasco. RMO/RAO Teresa M. Marasco. Fair Housing Officer Patty Michaelak. Minority and Women Business Owners MWBO Officer Steve Mountain. And be it further resolved that the following rates, hours, schedules, and conditions be and hereby are established for the one-year term, beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021. Mileage reimbursement rate for the use of a private vehicle in the conduct of official town business shall be 56 cents per mile. Personal development expenses for town officers and employees is hereby authorized to 1,000 per year. Each such personal development expense shall require town board approval. Amounts in excess must be approved by the town board. All meals per day shall not exceed $40. Employee working during any emergency call-out is entitled to meal reimbursement, not to exceed $8 per meal. One employee is hereby authorized to participate in leadership Genesee at a cost of $2,100, requiring town board approval. The schedule of regular official meeting of the Batavia Town Board shall be the third Wednesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM. And such regular meetings shall be held at the Batavia Town Hall, 3833 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York. The schedule of work sessions of the Batavia Town Board shall be each Wednesday, beginning at 5:00 PM, and shall be held at the Batavia Town Hall, 3833 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York. No action shall be taken at such work sessions. The schedule of the Planning Board meetings shall be the first and third Tuesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM. The meeting held at the Batavia Town Hall, 3833 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York. The schedule of the Zoning Board of Appeals meetings shall be the third Monday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM, and shall be held at the Batavia Town Hall, 3833 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York. The Town Highway Superintendent is hereby authorized to make purchases under the Genesee County contract. Office hours at the Town Hall are hereby set at 8:30 AM until 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, except recognized holidays. The Daily News, Batavia, is hereby designated as the town's official newspaper. So moved.
Second, Dan Underhill.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Dan, Resolution Number Two, please.
Resolution Number Two, adopting the salaries for 2021, generally elected in office. Resolve the Batavia Town Board hereby accepts the following salaries for 2021. So moved.
Zambito, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Three. Adoption of salaries for 2021, Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. Resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby adopts the following salaries for 2021, as written. So moved.
Second, Dan Underhill.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Post?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes.
You didn't call me, Teresa.
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
Yes.
Patty, Resolution Number Four.
Adoption of salaries for 2021, Highway and Water/Wastewater. Resolve the Batavia Town Board hereby adopts the following salaries for 2021, as written, so moved.
Zambito, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Post?
Upstein. Resolution Number Five.
Resolution establishing workday for elected and appointed officials. Resolve the Batavia Town Board hereby establishes the following as standard workday for elected and appointed officials for the purpose of determining days' work reported to the New York State and local employees retirement system, as written, so moved.
Second, Patty Michaelak.
Discussion? Roll call.
Zambito?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Sharon, Resolution Number Six.
Establishing rules of procedure of the Batavia Town Board for 2021. Resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby establishes and adopts the following rules of procedure for the year 2021, as written, so moved.
Second, Dan Underhill.
Let me just make a note that there have been no changes from the previous year's rules of procedure. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Seven, Dan.
Resolution Number Seven, policy concerning public participation at the town board meetings. Whereas Batavia is interested and receptive to the genuine concerns and sincere expressions of all town residents, resolve that the supervisor will provide an orderly and productive forum for public audience participation at all meetings of the town board, where such participation will be afforded to all residents equally. Resolve that each speaker will be limited to five minutes to speak, if necessary, at the time of public participation. However, or anyone else may also speak for five minutes at a time, and a resolution is being discussed. So moved.
Second, Sharon White.
Discussion? Nothing's changed from previous policy. Roll call, please.
Underhill?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Eight, designation of official depository. Resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby designates the following as official depositories of the Town of Batavia for all operational accounts. Five Star Bank, Batavia, New York. And resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby designate the following as official depository of the Town of Batavia for investment purposes. M&amp;T Bank, Five Star Bank, Key Bank, Bank of Castile, First Niagara Bank, JP Morgan Chase, and New York Class. So moved.
Second, Sharon White.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Post?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Patty, Resolution Number Nine.
Official undertaking of municipal officials, as written, so moved.
Zambito, second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Ten.
Authorization of petty cash resolved pursuant to Section 641A of the Town of Batavia. Town Board hereby authorizes a petty cash fund for the town clerk, tax collector, not to exceed $200, and petty cash fund for the justice clerks not to exceed $200. So moved.
Second, Dan Underhill.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Sharon, Resolution Number Eleven.
Authorization for the supervisor to pay certain claims prior to audit. Resolve pursuant to Section 118 of the Town Law, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisor to pay claims for public utilities, postage, freight, and express charges before they are audited. And be it further resolved, the Batavia Town Board also authorizes ACH payments to the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development before they are audited, as written, so moved.
Second, Zambito. Discussion? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Dan, Resolution Number Twelve.
Resolution Number Twelve, agreement for the expenditures of highway monies. Whereas the town board and the town highway superintendent should enter into an agreement relative to the expenditures of highway monies for repair and improvement of town highways, Highway Law 284. Whereas this agreement must be prepared and duplicate and signed by a majority of the town board members, the highway superintendent filed with the town clerk, filed with the town clerk, and the Genesee County Highway Department. Resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby adopts the Town Highway Superintendent's agreement relative to expenditures of highway monies for the repair and improvement of town highways, as present by the Town of Batavia Highway Superintendent. So moved.
Second, Sharon White.
All of you are expected to stop in and sign that document after this evening's meeting at some point the next day or two.
Thank you for reminding them.
Well, you said you'd hurt me if I didn't.
My God. Underhill?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Thirteen. Applications for appointments in the Town of Batavia. Resolve in order to encourage the participation of all town residents in the governmental and political process of the town, the following criteria will be used. One, appointments will be made based on qualifications. Two, positions will be advertised in the town's official newspaper, the Daily News. Number three, the attached application form will be the official form to be used for submission by the applicant to the town board for consideration, so moved, as written.
Second, Chad and Michaelak.
Roll call.
Post?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Resolution Number Fourteen.
Payroll Schedule for 2021. Resolve the Batavia Town Board hereby adopts a payroll schedule for 2021 to be bi-weekly for all employees, including the Town Planning Board members and the Zoning Board of Appeal members. And so moved.
Zambito, second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Number Fifteen, please.
Authorizing consulting services. Resolve all consulting services must first receive approval from the town board. However, to avoid delay of development or any other project requiring consulting services in a town, supervisors hereby authorized to approve during the interim of monthly meetings. Costs not to exceed $4,000. Be it further resolved, all monthly invoices are required by the town, and payment of any invoices received later than the first Wednesday before the regular scheduled town board meeting may be delayed to the following month. Consulting costs for each task performed must be itemized on separate invoices. Invoices must be sent to the supervisor, so moved.
Second, Dan Underhill.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Sharon, Resolution Number Sixteen.
Videotaping. Whereas the Batavia Town Board wishes that the Town Board meeting proceedings of the Town of Batavia be attainable and accessible to as many citizens as possible. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes Alicia Cosse Video News Service to videotape and upload the Town Board meetings at a rate of $45 per hour. So moved.
Second, Patty Michaelak.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Seventeen.
Resolution Number Seventeen, Resolution Establishing the Holiday Schedule. Resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby establishes the following holiday schedule for 2021, as written, so moved.
Second, Zambito.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Underhill?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Eighteen. Appointment to Planning Board, whereas Kathleen Jusiski, 2982, West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York, term on the Town of Batavia Planning Board as Chairwoman expired on December 31st, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby reappoints Kathleen Jusiski to the Town of Batavia Planning Board as Chairwoman effective January 1st, 2021, and expiring December 31st, 2027. And be it further resolved, said member appointed is subject to completing the required training within each calendar year. And be it further resolved that the training is incomplete, the Town Board will consider the position vacant and readvertise to fill the vacancy, so moved.
Second, Sharon White.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Post?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Patty, Resolution Number Nineteen.
Appointment to Zoning Board of Appeals. Whereas Michael Polinsey, 9197 Alexander Road, Batavia, New York, term on the Town Board, Town Zoning Board of Appeals expired on December 31st, 2020. And now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby reappoints Michael Polinsey to the Town of Batavia Zoning Board of Appeals effective January 1st, 2021, and expiring December 31st, 2025. And be it further resolved that said member appointed is subject to completing required training within each calendar year. And be it further resolved, the training is incomplete, the Town Board will consider the position vacant and readvertise to fill the vacancy. So moved.
Second, Zambito.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Ten.
Appointment to Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate member. Whereas Keith Bohheim, 8492, Violet Lane, Batavia, New York, term on the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate member expired December 31st, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby reappoints Keith Bohheim to the Town of Batavia Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate member effective January 1st, 2021, and expiring December 31st, 2022. And be it further resolved, said member is appointed as subject to completing that required training within each calendar year. And be it further resolved, if the training is incomplete, the Town Board will consider the position vacant and readvertise to fill the vacancy. So moved.
Second.
Dan Underhill, second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Twenty-One.
Authorize appointment of attorney for the town. Resolve that the Batavia Town Board hereby appoints Andrew Meyer as attorney for the Town of Batavia at a rate of $210 per hour, for the one-year term, beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021. And be it further resolved that all legal services must first receive approval from the Town Board. However, to avoid any delay in legal proceedings of the town, the supervisor is hereby authorized to approve during the interim of monthly meetings, legal fees not to exceed $4,000. The law firm of Harris Beach LLC, Council for the Town of Batavia Landfill Superfund Site, and Hodgson Russ Attorneys LLP, Council for Labor Negotiations are excluded from this resolution. Further resolved that all Town Board members have a legal right to confer with the town attorney at any time. So moved.
Second, Zambito.
Discussion? Roll call.
White?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Two.
Authorize an appointment of the town prosecutor. Resolve the Batavia Town Board hereby appoints Jacob Whiting, Whiting Law Firm, as prosecutor for the Town of Batavia at a cost of $675 a week, for a one-year term, beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021. This will be an all-inclusive fee with no additional charges or deletions of any nature. As, so moved.
Second, Sharon White.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Underhill?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Post?
Yes. Resolution Number Twenty-Three, Investment Policy Review. Whereas the Town of Batavia has had an investment policy in effect since February 1988, with amendments through March 18th of 2020. And whereas the Batavia Town Board has reviewed the investment policy, and whereas there are no amendments at this time to the investment policy, now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby has reviewed the investment policy, and there are no amendments to it at this time. So moved.
Second, Patty Michaelak.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Post?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Patty, Resolution Number Twenty-four.
Procurement Policy Reviewed. Whereas the Town of Batavia established its procurement policy in February 1992, with amendments through June 2018. And whereas the Batavia Town Board has reviewed the procurement policy, and whereas there is no amendments at this time to the procurement policy, now therefore be it resolved, Batavia Town Board hereby has reviewed the procurement policy. Batavia Town Board hereby has reviewed the procurement policy and there are no amendments to it at this time. So moved.
Second, Zambito.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution number twenty-five.
Fair housing policy reviewed, whereas the town of Batavia has had a fair housing policy in effect since twenty, or two thousand and eight. And whereas the town board has reviewed the fair housing policy and whereas there are no amendments at this time to the fair housing policy, now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby has reviewed the fair housing policy and there are no amendments to it at this time. So moved.
Second, Patty Michaelak.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Someone move to adjourn the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second, Sharon White.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Eddie, you moved, right?
Yes.
Okay. Michaelak?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Assistant, I'd like to take a two-hour recess and join you back here about nine-thirty tonight and then we'll
Yeah, right.
Oh, wait a minute, I was reading the other minutes. Call the special town boarding for January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Please have roll call for that, please.
Host?
Here.
White?
Here.
Underhill?
Here.
Michaelak?
Here.
Zambito?
Here.
Someone move to approve the minutes of the December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty public hearing for the town of Batavia Fire Protection Contract.
So moved. Dan Underhill.
Zambito, second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Sharon, did you read that?
No, I wrote, I'm
Oh, Greg did. Oh, you're goofing up here.
I'm sorry.
You were out of turn.
Well, I was just, just getting approval for the minutes.
Oh, okay. I'm out of turn. Sorry. Sorry.
Wait, can we, can we mark the date that Greg was right and Teresa was wrong? Because I'm not
And I'll never see the light of day. Teresa's got the power.
I'm sorry. I was concentrating. I was trying to share the special meeting agenda, but apparently it didn't open up, so I share that. So, host?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Would someone move to approve the minutes of the December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty regular town board meeting?
So moved. Zambito?
Second, Michaelak.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Zambito?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
On, white?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. And finally, would someone move to approve the minutes of the December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty special town board meeting?
So moved. Dan Underhill.
Second, Sharon White.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Underhill?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Sharon, would you read resolution number twenty-six, please?
Contract to provide assistance to employees who have alcohol, drug, financial, and other personal problems. Whereas at the November fifteenth, nineteen ninety-five town board meeting, the town board adopted an alcohol and drug testing policy. Whereas the town wishes to provide assistance to employees who have alcohol, drug, financial, and other personal problems. Whereas Royal Employer Services will provide these services to the town at a cost of four hundred and fifty dollars annually, contract attached. Now therefore be it resolved, the Batavia Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute the contract between the town of Batavia and Royal Employer Services to provide assistance to employees who have alcohol, drug, financial, and other personal problems, a copy of which is annexed here too and made a part of the minutes at a cost of four hundred and fifty dollars annually. And be it further resolved, this contract runs from January first, twenty twenty-one into, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, please.
Where, I have, just have a question. Where is that place?
It's on, um, it's what Jacas says.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's local, it's local, then?
Correct. Yep. Yep.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Someone move to table resolution number twenty-seven.
Um, make a motion to table resolution number twenty-seven.
Second, Zambito.
The reason for the table is this organization no longer has a Batavia or local office in the county. Um, in between our, um, testing procedures for our new hires, uh, one of them was able to get in and then the next one went and they were signing the door to hit a rock. So, um, it's untenable because these services are necessary in the, any incident involving, uh, any of our staff and we need immediate service work in the process of engaging another contract for this, for a local provider. Uh, we'll have that ready for the next meeting. Roll call on the, uh, motion to table.
Underhill?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. And resolution number twenty-eight.
Audit service agreements between the town of Batavia and Fred Maxwell Batacula P C. Resolve the Batavia Town Board of the town of Batavia, New York, that the proposed audit service agreements between Fred Maxwell and the town of Batavia, one agreement for audit of government activities for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. One agreement for the New York State Annual Update Document. The one agreement for the town line water project, A U D, copies of which are annexed here too and made part of the town board minutes and hereby approved. And the town supervisor is authorized and directed to sign these agreements on behalf of the town of Batavia. So moved.
Second, Michaelak.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Resolution twenty-nine, backflow services agreement between P D M engineers in the town of Batavia. Whereas the contract with P D M engineers for backflow services expired December thirty-first, twenty twenty, and whereas the town engineer recommends redoing the contract with P D M engineers. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Batavia, New York, that the proposed backflow services agreement between P D M engineers and the town of Batavia, a copy of which is annexed here too and made part of the town board minutes is hereby approved and the supervisor is authorized and directed to sign this agreement on behalf of the town of Batavia. So moved.
Zambito, second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Host?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Patty, finally, resolution number thirty.
Resolution, sorry, resolution to retain special counsel to defend the town in building and zoning code violation matters. Whereas in December twenty nineteen, the Building, Zoning and Code Enforcement Department requested legal counsel to defend the town in proceedings brought by the town against individual property owners. And whereas James Woodjick of the law firm of Dad Nelson Wilkinson and Woodjick was retained for code enforcement proceedings and services expired December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And whereas Mr. Woodjick submitted a letter of proposal for the position for special counsel for code enforcement proceedings. Now therefore be it resolved, the town board hereby retains James M. Woodjick of the town law firm of Dad Nelson Wilkinson and Woodjick as a special counsel to defend town in code enforcement proceedings at a rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per hour and the rate of one hundred dollars per hour for his legal assistance, effective January first, twenty twenty-one and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. A copy of the proposed letter is annexed here too and made a part of the minutes. And be it further resolved, the expenditure will be appointed from line item A three-six-twenty-point-four-zero-one. So moved.
Zambito, second.
Discussion. Roll, roll call, please.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. That concludes the resolutions and proceedings for this evening's meeting. Someone move to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Michaelak.
Discussion. Just want to thank you all for your participation this evening. It's looking like we're going to have an exotic and extraordinary, exciting new year. Uh, as things develop on a day-to-day basis here in Batavia, New York. My recommendation is to gird your loins and be prepared. Um, thank you all for your attendance and how well, uh, uh, you've contributed and I'll, I'll see you soon next week. Roll call.
Thank you, Greg.
Underhill?
Yes.
Michaelak?
Yes.
Zambito?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Host?
Yes. Have a great evening and a terrific rest of your week.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Just a reminder to stop in the hall to sign that, okay?
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you don't do it, I get the beating.
Okay.